Okay, at 6:30, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Oh, no, wait. Okay, that's, okay. You have that twice, or what's the, sorry?
The first is just the approval of the agenda.
Oh, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Okay, motion?
A motion.
Second.
Any question? I am sorry, I haven't done this in a long time. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Passes 3-0. All right, open for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to address the council, please do so. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. All right, now we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent agenda? Okay.
Hearing none?
What?
Hearing none, I'll look for a motion.
Look for a motion, sorry.
Motion.
Second.
All right, motion passes 3-0, I am really sorry.
Aye.
Okay.
You did manage.
Oh my gosh, I really apologize to everybody that's watching. I promise I'll get my act together in a minute. All right, the business items, number eight, we have Christian Torkelson here to talk about security maturity assessment.
Members of the council, thank you for having me today. Nick, City Minister Johnson was a great help and assistance, as well as Jimmy Brand, in helping conduct a security maturity assessment for the city of mayor. Over the course of the last few weeks, we've met three times to review what's called a NIST cybersecurity maturity assessment. And then... You got me covered, thank you, appreciate it. So, we met three times over the last couple of weeks to make sure that we were covering the NIST cybersecurity framework. This assessment is basically a framework of security controls that we're able to benchmark your city operations against. Next slide. What this assessment is not, this shouldn't be considered like an independent audit. In the same way that you might bring in a financial auditor to review your books and review your financial controls on annual basis, like your Clifton Larson Allen's, or your, you know, Baker Tilly's, or other, you know, Redpass, or whomever you use. They're independent, right? So, in this circumstance, even though I don't work for the city of mayor, I would not consider me to be an independent assessor for this particular review. Instead, what you should consider this as is technical consulting advice to help city staff perform their own self-assessment of your operations. And then finally, the other thing you should not consider this review report as is a report card that judges the individual performance of city staff, nor does it judge the performance of your city IT provider. Next slide. So, what is NIST? Well, NIST is the National Institute of Standards and Technology. They're a federal agency housed under the Department of Commerce, and essentially, they define standards for a whole host of industries, including cybersecurity and technology. In a sense, the most important part to understand is it's a government agency, they're very well-regarded, and international standards bodies look to NIST for their own advice on how to set standards for their own countries. Next slide. What is the CSF? This is the cybersecurity framework, this is a product of NIST, this is what NIST has developed, and it is a collection of guidelines and best practices on cybersecurity specifically. It was originally released in 2014, and it targeted critical infrastructure sectors, which includes local government. So, it's really designed for us, in a sense. But, it's obtained sort of, you know, more wide usage than just government, so private sector industries utilize the cybersecurity framework to benchmark their own operations against, and so, in a sense, it's grown in popularity and grown beyond its intended purpose. Next slide. Do you need to be compliant with NIST? The answer is no. This is voluntary, and while it's intended for critical infrastructure sectors like local government, like water utilities, like energy providers, it doesn't necessarily require you to be compliant with it, so there's no statute that exists that says you need to meet all these objectives. So, I wouldn't worry about that if that's your concern. However, what I will say is that I think if I'm looking, you know, out into the future, kind of projecting, looking through the looking glass, what I see is that future federal and state legislation might require cybersecurity controls in place, and when that occurs, or if that occurs, it's likely to benchmark against or reference this framework in the future. So, this is the most obvious framework that might be chosen for future regulatory compliance requirements. And so, in the sense that you don't have to be compliant with it now, doesn't mean you won't in the future, and so getting a head start is a good thing. Next slide. So, ultimately, the NIST CSF is comprised of five main functions, identify, protect, detect, respond, and recover. I'll give you a little bit of overview of what those things mean in just a few minutes, but essentially, each of these main functions has a few categories nested underneath it, and within each of those categories are themselves nested individual controls or objectives that we assess against. So, there was 108 questions we reviewed and provide a score or rank on for this assessment. Next slide. If you wanted to look at this maybe in a little more blown up fashion, a little easier read, you can see that each of our categories sit underneath one of the five functions, and so, some, they're grouped thematically, based on kind of what purpose the function serves to the organization. Next slide. And I should say, if you have council staff, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt and just ask away. Some of the advantage of the CSF are that it is a government-sponsored standard, it is widely used across numerous industry sectors, and you can, because of that, compare your score to other entities in the same sector or in other sectors. And then finally, the, I think, in my mind, the main beauty of the NIST CSF is that it isn't even necessarily for comparing yourself against other entities in similar industries, it's to compare against yourself year after year. The framework stays very stable and the same from year after year, and it doesn't change frequently, and so what that means is you take an assessment of yourself in year one, and then you do it again in year two, and you redo the math, figure out what your scores are, and ultimately, you can see if you've moved the needle from year to year. And that's the important part of this framework and really why you're doing it. Next slide. Next, there are a few disadvantages to the cybersecurity framework. It includes some control objectives that are, in my mind, not realistic or perhaps unobtainable for a city of this size, or an organization of this size. So, that means there's a practical cap on how high you're going to score realistically. And there, some in the industry have expressed some frustration with not being able to reach some of the higher scores, and because of that, you might argue, NIST might even be too big of an implement for an entity of this size. Nonetheless, I think there are few frameworks out there that are better alternatives, and so, without the holy grail available to us, we took the next best thing and we went with this. Now, there are ways to address this fact, and I'm going to get into that when we get into the scores, but just understand that there's a practical cap on how high you're going to be able to score. Next slide. How are scores assessed? Great question. Well, essentially, they're scored on a scale of one to five. Lower scores are less developed or non-existent controls, higher scores are highly developed and highly comprehensive controls. In a sense, low is bad, high is good. The reality is that you can take these scores and you can average them on a category basis and on a function basis, or across the framework as a whole, to get scores for different parts of your organization, and that allows you to really figure out, well, where are we weak, and where are we strong, and where might we want to target or prioritize investment to enhance our security in the future. Next slide. This is a sample of kind of a scoring cheat sheet of how you might interpret or score yourself on any given metric, depending on what you're assessing, whether it's a, you know, people, or a process, or a technology, you would consult this and determine where you fit in the scale. Long story short, it's hard for any organization to get to levels four or five unless you have technically automated controls that don't require human intervention. So, that means highly automated infrastructure, lots of investment in technology, it's not realistic for many organizations of this size to achieve that, and so, from a practical perspective, that cap for an organization of this size is probably around a level three. I would not expect your organization to be higher than that, and that, in my mind, represents a realistic target goal for the city of mayor. Next slide. So, these are your scores. Where do you fall? Overall, I've broken down your scores at the function level, so these are the five main functions and what they do. So, in terms of the identify area or function of your organization, it's an understanding of what business processes, what city services you have, what systems and data and software I have, it's really identifying the landscape you have, right? It's identifying what you have and what your risks are. That's kind of the first category, and for that, you score 1.55. For protect, this is a category of technical controls, essentially. Do I have antivirus on my computer? Do I have a firewall in place? Do I have passwords on my wifi? Have I enabled multi-factor authentication? These are technical controls. And in this area, you score your highest out of any given category, and this makes sense because this is what you're paying your technology provider, brand, networking to do for you. And so, the things that you are paying for are the things that you're also scoring higher on, and that shouldn't be a surprise to you as council members. Detect is an area where you're having some trouble. The reality with this category, though, is that the types of technical solutions you would need to implement to be able to detect, or the amount of staffing you would need to staff people to watch your logs 24/7, that requires such a high investment in resources and in technology and in people, that it would be unrealistic to be able to do a lot of the detect requirements without, I would say, a significant increase in cost. So, I see detect as the category that will always plague you, and you will always have scores lower in this category because you're a smaller organization. Respond. This is the ability to take action when you do determine that something has gone wrong. And in this capacity, you're doing a little better than the, than identify and detect, I think, after you have gone through an incident here at the city, that's primed you to be more receptive to incidents, to be ready to act more quickly to incidents, and to have kind of a, more of a plan in place to act on incidents. And that's something that I think we saw in our assessment and in our conversations about the requirements in this area. And then finally, recover is what do you do if something goes wrong, and how do you get back to your pre-incident state? You know, my computer was ransomware'd and locked up, how do I restore the backup and reimagine the machine, get back up and running back to the prior state? That's really what this recover category is, and in this case, you're doing okay as well, also a category where you're paying for some services from your IT provider. So, if you overall average your entire organization, you're 1.95 out of five. And that seems fairly low, but I think the better way to look at it is more like a 1.95 out of three, because some of those higher level of scores are pretty unobtainable for an organization of this size. And the other thing I want to provide some context on is that, in my experience, I've worked for Fortune 100 companies that have also gone down this path and started to assess themselves to NIST, the NIST CSF, and those organizations had trouble cracking a two in their first year. So, it isn't surprising that in your first year of assessment, you don't have terribly great scores. In fact, that's normal for just about any entity that starts this process of assessing your maturity, generally speaking, until you know what you need to implement and benchmark yourself against a standard, it's pretty hard to just walk into this and have high scores right off the bat. It would be, it's pretty rare for that to occur. So, and for comparison's sake, I recently did the same assessment for another city here in Minnesota. This city is approximately 25,000 population, and they scored a 2.5, give or take, on this assessment, and they have four or five internal IT staff. So, quite a bit more resources, quite a bit more staff time dedicated to these issues, and so, you can see how getting to a three is probably the most you should expect as an organization. Next slide. In case you wanted to understand specifically which categories you are performing well in and not performing well on, I've provided a breakdown by category, and then, Nick, I've provided him a breakdown by each individual control. So, you have all that data available to you, I'm not covering that in this conversation because I think we could really get lost in the technical details, and I don't know how valuable that is to you. But essentially, long story short, if you scroll through the next slide, Nick, you can see some of these categories you're doing pretty good on, like the protect category of identity management, well, you know, you have a centralized, you know, IT provider who's kind of managing your network identities, and so, of course, you're doing better here than other places. And then there are some things that you aren't really doing right now, like managing your data flow and understanding where your data comes from and where it goes, and kind of having a map of all that, that's not something you're really doing today. And so, for example, you know, the information protection processes and procedures, that would be, you know, your score lower there. Finally, I think, you know, you could run through each of these individually, you go to respond, it's the next one.
Christian, sorry.
Yep.
Is this report, will this be available to us?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes, however, I would provide one recommendation. My recommendation here is that I would classify this as not public data, so that, or protected not public data, because it involves some security information and insensitive information about your security controls that I would advise you not make public. So, while we're having the general overview in this conversation on the recorded live stream, I wouldn't provide, like, say, the spreadsheet of the individual scores to the general public.
Yeah, I just ask, right, so, we can kind of have targets?
Yeah.
Right, like where you see the ones, you know?
Yeah, and so...
I can't remember all this.
There's, so for each of these five functions, I've broken down some technical recommendations...
Okay.
And some more detailed guidance that might improve some of those scores, and I've tried to identify some of those low-hanging fruits, that basically, I think it would make sense for, you know, Nick and Jimmy to sit down and have a conversation and say, you know, of the five things here, can we pick two, you know, in each category, and just try to get them done in a year? And they can bring whatever it is going to take to get that done to you as a council for implementation. I didn't, I didn't want to list all those out in this meeting in particular because I thought that it might provide some insight into where you might be vulnerable, and so I didn't want to advertise, I didn't want to advertise all of those things to your audience, as large as it may be, or small, but the point is, that's provided to staff outside of this presentation.
Now, this is something we're going to review on an annual basis, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, if you go to the next slide, I think my recommendations are that, since you have this done, thank you, Councilmember Height, for the segue, I appreciate it, you could consider reviewing yourself against the same framework in subsequent years. So, you come back to this in one year, you use the same spreadsheet, and the nice thing is you can just add a column for, okay, here's 2022 scores, or 2023 scores, and next year, you add in the 2024 column, and you rate yourself again, and since you have all your previous ratings there, it makes it a little easier to, you're not starting from scratch. The one thing that I think would make sense is that if you, if you could, I would say that a reasonable target would be a 3.0 organizational average, that would be great, that would be great for a city of this size. So, if you want to make that your long-term vision and goal, go for it. I would be ecstatic, and I'd love to work with Nick and Jimmy, and over the months and years, you know, we'll try to move the needle and get you there. But I would say it's probably unreasonable to expect you to go from 1.95 to a three in one year. I would say it would be aggressive to target 0.5 increase per year, is probably a reasonable amount to target, and, you know, more than that of a bump would be probably stretching staff capacity. And then finally, you could consider hiring an independent assessor to do this sort of analysis for you in subsequent years. I think, in the same way that you hire your auditor to look at your books, you could hire an independent assessor to do this type of assessment for you against the same framework in future years. Do I think it makes sense right now for next year? Probably not. I would say maybe every three years, like one year out of every three years, have an independent attestation of where you're at, and the value in that is it helps you understand, are we overestimating our capabilities, or are we underestimating our capabilities? And it provides a little bit of assessment independent of staff, right? I mean, of course, you hire your auditors to make sure staff are doing what you think they're doing, and in the same way, you'd hire an independent assessor to do the same thing here. You kind of have a pseudo-experience of an independent assessment in this first year, but in subsequent years, I, you know, that, you know, you would rely on your own staff to do it, and they would be providing the update to you. The one thing I would say is that I think for this assessment, we were, I personally was pretty gentle, this is the first time the city's going through this, where I didn't spend time asking for evidence or documentation supporting claims that staff had made, and so, in a sense, I was just working from, you know, whatever they say, I'm going to, I'm going to trust, right? You know, that's where we're at for this first year. Having that independent assessment in future years might be valuable to you as a council.
Do you have an estimated cost for that?
Yeah, a service like this, in today's market, probably $4,000 to $7,500, $4,000 to $7,500 for an assessment like this. And then that's why I don't think it's reasonable to do it every year for a city of this size. You know, if you were to, if you were to say, once every three years, or once every four years, I don't think I could argue with that at this point. So, and then finally, of course, it would make sense for you to review and discuss and budget for some of the technical recommendations, which I've provided to city staff under a separate cover. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, I don't have any questions.
I should say there is one more thing that you could do here to, in the, earlier in the presentation, I alluded to the fact that there's some concern that the NIST is kind of too big and too unwieldy for a city or an organization of this size. To address that, you could weight some of the questions inside the NIST CSF and say, well, I understand this is the best practice, but like, we're realistically never going to achieve it, and so for that reason, I'm either going to remove it from the framework that I'm benchmarking myself against, or I'll weight it lower or higher, depending on how critical you think it is to your operations. I've provided some initial recommended, like priority weightings for the different individual controls, in conjunction with discussion with city staff, oh, but the numbers you saw today were raw averages across the entire framework, they weren't weighted averages. And the important part to consider is that if you are going to do weighted averages, which might be more reflective of true or realistic performance for your city, you have to understand that if you're comparing it to other industry sectors or other sectors who provide those scores, those are probably not going to be weighted scores, so it wouldn't be an apples-to-apples comparison, so having that raw score and a weighted score would probably be most beneficial. All right, long story short, I mean, post-incident, I think you guys are probably better off than most cities of your size, truthfully. I think there are plenty of things to improve, and we've got a list of recommendations to work on. The most notable finding and recommendation that I would say probably should reach your top priority is to reevaluate how your city's performing backups, because at this point, it doesn't appear to me, in a conversation with Jimmy, that it would be resilient to ransomware. So, if you had a ransomware attack, your backups might themselves become encrypted based on the way it's configured, and that would be, if I was taking one action today to ask staff to go back and address, it would probably be work with Jimmy to figure out a ransomware resilient, or, you know, data immutable method of doing backups, because that would be my, one of my biggest concerns for you as a city at this point. I think that's it.
All right, well, thank you.
Right, thanks.
All right, we'll move on to the next, the consider approval to appoint Brad Quast to the Economic Development Authority.
Thank you, Mayor. The EDA met last week on Monday, and one of the items they took up for determination was making a recommendation to the city council for the vacancy that exists on the EDA. Originally, they had three candidates that were interested, one candidate dropped out, which left two on there, and after discussion, the board unanimously voted to recommend Brad Quast to fill the vacancy. So, process being, that recommendation comes up to city council, then the city council would make the final appointment on that.
All right, so, do we have a motion?
A motion.
Second?
Second. I just wanted to make a note that we did discuss conflict of interest or anything with the fire station, and kind of gather to plan on, he would recuse himself from anything to do with that.
All right, that sounds good. Any other further discussion?
Sorry.
All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 3-0. All right, business item number 10, consider adoption of resolution regarding EDA requests for annual funding and setting a public hearing.
So, as part of the process that we're currently going through to potentially fund the EDA for next year, when you do it the first time, you have to go through a public hearing process when you do that, and the timelines we're looking at is, for the July 24th meeting here, we're looking at the $50,000 allotment, since the EDA, as we discussed, can't levy on its own, we let, would let, we proposed a levy on their behalf, that becomes a part of our general levy that we take in, and then we would transfer money from the general fund to the EDA, and that's how they would receive their funds. So, tonight, we'd be looking to adopt the resolution that states the amounts that would be levied. Get down to that item here, my qualities. So, for that, it would propose to set a levy of $50,000 for the benefit of the authority, this is less than the maximum of $51,806, which is allowed by law, and then it also requires us to have a public hearing on the matter, and the public hearing would then be set for August 14th, 2023, at 6:30 PM, that'd be our next regular council meeting here at City Hall, and then we receive input at that. And then we receive input at that. After the public hearing, if council is still favorable on that, we would then adopt a final resolution which would authorize that amount to be levied. There is, that would then get published in the paper. And then there's a reverse referendum, a lot, time allotment as part of that. So if we don't receive 5% of the eligible voters in a petition within the 30 days, which brings it to September 18th, then the matter is then adopted. And that expires. So that would be, that is, as we're building it here into the budget, as we talked about last time, having that 50,000, it's currently slotted in there. Because we talked about, we can always lower our levy, but we can't raise it. So we want to build those things in. So the final date on that would be September 25th, our second meeting of that month. If no petition is filed, we would adopt a preliminary levy resolution which would include those EDA funds. So that's the total process we're looking at on this.
Is there a motion to approve resolution 2023-26?
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all, all approve, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Hearing none, passes 3-0. All right, number 11, consider adoption of resolution author, authorizing submission of a PSIG grant application.
Thank you. So in front of us, we, a while ago, we had Bolton Menken here and they had presented us the facilities plan for the wastewater treatment facility. It was a seven to nine million dollar phase that we're looking at, which would build a digester facility, do a bunch of site work, clarify improvements and replace equipment that's getting on 20 years in age and should be replaced before it fails. Not that it's an imminent failure, but it's equipment you want to have replaced before it fails. Part of that conversation was applying for the Point Source Implementation Grant through the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority, the PSIG. And they offer grants to utility entities to help fund these sorts of improvements. So we're not heavily burdened with a debt responsibility and our rates have to quadruple in order to pay for it, things of that nature. So they have prepared the grant application on our behalf. And in order for us to submit that grant, much similar to the DNR grant, we pass a resolution which authorizes the submission of that grant. There's a little bit of detail on that. The total project cost, if we're looking at nine million total on the whole project, the PSIG will fund up to 80% of the grant with a maximum of seven million. So our portion that we've calc, or that Bolton Menke have calculated out for this grant would be approximately 6.1 million in grant application request. This is a competitive grant program. There is a list that's part of it. There's an evaluation that goes with it. So we're not guaranteed funds with any competitive grant, but we got to put it in if we're going to have a chance of getting any funding for it.
If we're awarded it, how long do we have?
I do not know the details on how long we, specifically how many years we have to use it.
Yep. I just don't want them like, two years off, we better get going.
So the overall, the overall funding scenario on the wastewater treatment facility is we have, so the sewer fund has about 2.2 million in reserves. Now, we want to keep a share of that to make sure operations happen. And as we discussed before, you, you want about 100% of your operational expenditures in a year as your reserve. So that's, we're talking about a half million-ish dollars, 500, 600,000. So you're looking more in that one, one and a half worth of money you can put towards the project. So we're looking at one and a half million out of reserves. And then if we look at the bonding scenario, if we need to go that far, depending on how bid costs come in, we do have bonds and I'll talk a little bit more of this on the workshop a little bit. But the sewer fund only has one debt with it and that's the 2017A bond and that is scheduled, final payment is next year. That bond payment is supported by a property tax levy that we levy each year that goes towards the sewer fund. So, long story short, if you reverse engineer the numbers, if we retire the old debt which gets paid off next year and we apply some new debt to help the funding scenario, the maximum amount that we're, could be looking at, depending on interest rates, is about 2 million. And that would allow us to keep our rates the same and not have to increase them because of the debt. Now, if operational costs go up, we'd be looking at 2%, 3% increases on the rates, but that's about our limit on where we can issue new debt without it affecting, you know, causing a forcible jump in the rates, in my preliminary look at it. So you're looking at those three funding categories to make this project whole.
All right. Okay, so do we have a motion for resolution 2023-27?
A motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So Nick will apply for this now.
Mm-hmm.
We'll make this and it'll go in. When do we find out? Do you, like, what's the timeframe?
That would be late this year, early next year. We'll get through that because they work off the fiscal calendar versus our.
I'm imagining it'd be like four or five years before we'd have to use it. I mean, that's quite the project to undertake in a very short period of time otherwise.
And you said, right, our cap is like 6.1 million, but we could get 3 million? Like, do they always pay 80% or?
They try to fund what people ask for because they understand that if they cut it in half...
It's going to make it, okay.
They might not be able to do the project because you need all that funding...
Right.
...to make it a go.
Right.
And so if we do not get this grant now, we could apply again next year?
Right. We wouldn't necessarily have to reapply this because we get on the list.
Okay.
Because there's a listing they have of all the PSIG applicants. And you would, you would do, you would have to resubmit, but then you update your ranking on the priority list and continue to work your way up as years go on.
And is this for all of Minnesota that's eligible for this?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't have anything else. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against, motion passes 3-0. All right, moving on to city council reports. Councilmember Wagner, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Help?
Nope.
I do not either. And do we have a motion for, to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we're adjourned. Now we'll move into the work session.
Probably want to get out of here. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Drive safe.
All right, so we will get into the budget update. I have a short budget update from the actual numbers end of things. And then after that, I'm going to talk, go into a presentation with talks about sources, uses and timing on a kind of a high level. And that'll also include a little conversation about our debt structure and what that looks like. Just, it's good information to counsel for have, just in the back of your minds as we continue to go through these things because they'll come up throughout the year. So changes from last, so I'm going to do changes from the last budget session to this one, so we're not rehashing the entirety of the budget over and over again. And after this meeting tomorrow, I'm going to send out both the original spreadsheet and this updated spreadsheet so you can see where we were, where we came from, things of that nature. So under the general fund, one of the changes was in here, this was 20,000 before, and I updated to 24,000. That reflects the contract we have with American Tower and the base amount that they do give us annually for rent on the water tower.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yes.
Sorry, is this a, am I okay to ask questions now?
Yeah, yeah.
Is this an interactive or do you want me to write them down till the end?
100% interactive. Ask now because it's one of those things where when I go through a half hour of talking about budgets, like, all right, what was the question?
Yeah. So has the rent for the antenna always gone into the general fund?
Yes. I know there was one point, it was talked that it was supposed to go to the park fund.
But it never has in the budget.
I think, if I remember right, maybe one year, part of it went in there. So the tower antenna contract, it's set up to where we get payments from American Tower, who manages the tower overall on our behalf. But then we're supposed to get partial, i- if there are sub leases on the tower to any other renters for space, we get a percentage of that rent as well. So I'm currently in the process of getting American Tower to give us an updated listing of who's on that tower. We don't have an updated list of that. They're supposed to be giving us that. We haven't had that for a few years now. And that helps us make sure that we're getting the correct amounts that we're supposed to be getting. And I have heard that, that a portion of that was supposed to go to the park fund, but in looking at the history of it, it hasn't gone toward the park fund.
So that's, that was my question, right? Like, that was my understanding as well. I've heard that it was, that it used to go there and it's been moved, but that's not what you're saying has happened.
Yeah, I, I think one year it went to the park fund, but then it was just, it went right back into the general fund, from what I've seen historically.
Okay, thank you.
So that was a change in that, just from 20 to 24,000 on that front. Under the expense side for the general fund, there haven't been a ton of changes. This one got added, I forgot to add it in yellow, but this is the transfer to the EDA for 50,000 that we had talked about. Did I have that last?
Pretty sure you had that last time.
Okay, so maybe that wasn't a big, wasn't a change then. As talked about before, and I'll go to that one. So here's the general fund one. I had a bunch of these make-in-actives on a bunch of these funds, or line item codes and department codes. There it is. So like I talked about, I had rolled up city clerk deputy into administrator because it does not make sense to have individual department codes for individual staff. That's just, it's not how that works. There should be city administration, not administrator. Plus, now that we have a third position, I'm not creating entirely new one for finance clerk. We roll it all up. So a lot of these make-in-actives, we haven't gone into this, into Banyan yet and actually made them active, but when you look at the budget now, I've switched over to the current one, after administrator, you don't see city clerk there anymore. So on a spreadsheet wise, I've collapsed those out because they're not necessary anymore and the funds have been moved. So we've done that there for those, not a ton of other updates here. On the regionalization front, Michael Lean, Commander Michael Lean has done his workload analysis and it came in pretty close to what we thought it might look like. Originally, I was pretty aggressive in thinking maybe it might be down to 20 hours, but after talks, maybe that would be more in that 25 to 30 than talking with Mike and other city administrators. And Mike's analysis came back to saying it would be about 28 is where they would want to slot it at. New Germany would go from five to six, we'd go from 35 down to 28, and Watertown would get the remainder as they've been wanting more hours. So the nice part is it worked out. The analysis came in close. Now with that, as we inch closer, next steps is that, is we need to create a regionalized work plan because Mayor New Germany had, we have an annual work plan with the sheriff's office and Watertown has an annual work plan with the sheriff's office. Thankfully, 90% of it, generally speaking, is a lot of the same stuff. Enforce local ordinances, patrol parks, traffic, citizen engagement, work with businesses, things like that. There are a couple of things that are specific to Watertown, but we can tailor those out into the regional work plan. Once we have the regional work plan together and then we have some more details on how regionalization is going to actually pan out and work, we meet those out between the cities, then we're going to come back to the city councils once again for presentations on what we, our draft final product is and how this is all going to work. And then as long as the city councils of all three cities are saying, yep, we like this regionalized plan and what this plan is actually going to look like, then we can implement. If we're pretty aggressive, we could see quarter four potential for implementation, but I think we, year four, 2024.
And then would the hours be reviewed on a kind of a regular basis? Again, so that, what if we realize we actually need a little bit more policing the next year?
Yes. So the regionalization, much like our, our town cop models evaluated, evaluated each year, this regionalized plan would be evaluated each year. Now, this first year, we're going to do check-ins internally on a pretty regular basis just to make sure all three cities are liking what's going on. But for sure, the hard evaluation comes on an annual basis. So if we do need to make some adjustments, we can.
Now, for budgeting purposes, is there any flexibility? Because if we're going to do check-ins and let's say we're like, oh, you know what, we need to be that, let's just, just say 30 for some reason, from 28 to 30.
That would happen at the next years.
The next years, okay.
Yep. So this number here represents not only the, what would be the regionalized amount for mayor, but it also includes hours for CSO time as well. So that would, instead of, because that was originally 154, I believe it was. So we're going from 130 to 154, but that drops down now to 110, which results in a nice savings.
And I think we'll get a lot more coverage in every day than just specific days.
The flexibility will be nice, I believe.
And I'm assuming there's still a county car that comes around too that...
Yes.
Services.
Yeah, yeah. So you still have the general patrol vehicles for north and south. So those are independent of the regionalization. So let's say the regional car is up in Watertown responding to a call and something happens to the mayor, the general patrol car could come up and cover for it.
And then do we get charged for that?
No.
No.
Nope.
So we don't have to budget anything?
Right.
Okay. But that would be something that would be looked at in the check-ins or considered next year is, you know, 20% of the time we had this or whatever.
Yep. So the workload analysis was based off the call takes for each of the communities and they'll continue to do that data logging and call tracking and all of that to make sure that the allotment is where it ought to be. Then we get down into fire protection. Again, this is one of these where we rolled up a bunch of those from the other components. Not a lot has changed in there either. Under highways, under streets, basically I call it streets, for travel expense, I removed that out entirely. It just hasn't been used. It probably was, misuse is the wrong word. A lot of what the public works guys go for, for training is either for water or wastewater. They don't have parks trainings, they don't have streets trainings. So travel expenses is for, would be for reimbursements if they go to a conference. So those conferences are always water and wastewater trainings. So there's no reason to have money budgeted in here. A few years ago, there was some money that came out of here, so an amount just kind of was kept budgeted that might get used in the future, but I see no use for it since we're not going to code anything to it anymore. So that got reduced out. And then here under compost, originally at 7,500 and that's the amount we did for this year. I had that number stuck in my head when I shoved the budget number in there. We chipped $7,500 worth this year, which got the bulk of the pile taken care of. We stopped there because we didn't have more grant money for it. The remainder, plus a little, the amount we'll get next year, plus what's still there, 5,000 should take care of it on the whole. And that'll take care of the rest of the pile. Then it becomes, instead of letting the pile build up after four or five years, we chip annually and the county's grant program will cover that cost. We've got that figured out. So originally, we, if we look at revenues over expenditures, in the last go around, we were more in that 22-ish thousand. Revenues over expenditures, because we had the big change, the bulk of the change was from the law enforcement change. So now we're looking at 70. Now, we'll balance this budget out. It will be zero like you see in these previous two years. We will zero it out. It's just the question becomes how we zero that out. That could be, you could go from, we allocate the 70,000 towards this project and we balance it otherwise out, or you just drop the levy 70,000 and you're done with it. Or anything in between. But for this, we don't have to make that decision until the final day in September. So as we go through August and into September, we'll get this figured out where we want that to land.
Yeah, because we're going to that more like actual budgeting, like we're budgeting for what we actually are going to spend.
Right. Right.
What's the term? I don't remember the term without you.
Zero-based budgeting.
Yes.
But it's also a focus, it's a less of a focus on tax rate and more of a focus on controlling the levy. Because tax rate is a product, or it's the dividend of your, of your levy divided by your tax base. We set levies, we don't set tax rates. That's why in your levy resolution, we levy dollar amounts versus saying we want this percent. So the tax rate is the byproduct.
I think that'll help us understand the fluctuation. Because, yeah, we never, we didn't change the rate, but taxes still went up because the levy is what actually.
Right.
And that was just a, a learning. Coming from your expertise and under, helping us understand how that works compared to what we've kind of focused on in the past.
Common things cities do, if they have growth in a community, they measure what the growth of the new construction is, pure new construction, not just adjustment to property values as a whole, because that's not a perfect picture. They look at what did our tax base grow for new construction? And if they want to keep the property owners, say your, the taxes you pay for the city, if you pay 3,000 a year on your house, let's say, for the city's portion and you want to keep it at 3,000, you adjust your levy up by the mathematical equation of how much your tax base was raised on the new construction of things. And that should keep it at that level. But if you just do it according to what your needs are on the expense side, now as city grows, we add more things to it. But if you control it on the levy side, then as the tax base grows and the, what the people pay just goes down. Because it's not, it's not a one for one that goes up. But that's all in the philosophies. If you want to help keep that stable, you raise those extra funds and that can go towards more CIP items, put more money towards parks, more towards streets as those things are needed. Different philosophies. On the water end of things, on the tower antenna rent, so this category you saw in the general fund, what tower antenna rent means, this is on the water tower. This is the revenues that we were getting off the water tower. Now, all the equipment is going to be decommissioned this year. I think T-Mobile is still on the water tower and they are decommissioning their equipment. So we will not have any users on the water tower that will be paying rent. So hold this number out entirely. Could we have new users in the future? Yes, but I'm not going to bet on something that we don't have at this point.
And they're just being decommissioned because they don't want the, that.
Yeah, they don't want to use the tower anymore.
Do the companies typically come to us and ask if we have somewhere that they can use? Or do we go out and look for?
Both can be done. Typically, an entity will come in and say, hey, I'd like to rent space on your water tower. Saves them from having to build a tower themselves. Or they find it cheaper than renting off somebody else, could be. But that was one thing I was looking at doing is. Usually in cities I've worked for, agreements were in place and towers were full and they were already getting rent and I never have to, had to deal with it. You just collected money. So I'm going to be looking into what our RFP processes or how do you go ahead and attract? Because I would like to have users on the water tower so we can generate revenue. As part of that, because that helps keep our utility rates down when we have other people's money coming in. But I backed this out entirely until we get more. That was the only thing that happened in the water fund. So we're still about 40,000 revenues over expenditures, so we're still doing fine. It's just, you know, 30, went from about 70 down to 40 essentially. So still doing fine there. As far as what you typically see, you see 5% to 10% revenues over expenditures in those funds and the utility funds is where you about look for them. So still doing fine, it's not critical or anything like that. When you're looking at this kind of revenues over expenditures, that's really good. That's really, really good. But this was a lot was looking at having generated from home construction and the fees that were generated off that was the bulk of that. Sewer fund, I don't think I had any changes in there. No, I did not. Storm had no changes and then I have created, when you give funds to an EDA, they are required to submit a budget to council as, as part of that. So I have created an EDA budget on their behalf and it's pretty straightforward. Here we have our general fund transfers in. And then on the expense side, we have some advertising and printing. These are some costs that they've had historically related to some of the events that they participate in. But the bulk of that goes under the capital outlay, which is the best category we've got for grants to businesses. As I had put out the grant program that they had been working on, this is where the bulk of the money would go.
And then what happens if we don't really give away grants? Does the money just roll over to the next year and then do?
Oh, oh, gotcha.
You have to like approve a levy, like is this going to be 50,000 every year now?
The, the long-term goal is that there's 50,000 every year that goes to it and that the bulk of it goes out in grants. We have businesses who want it in town and they're utilizing those funds and they're making great improvements and life is great for them.
Could we, okay, go ahead, keep going.
Let's say we're only spending $20,000 in grants a year. Then we would adjust what's given to the EDA because they don't, they don't need to sit on money for the fun of sitting on money. So in future years, if we're not seeing total participation and the efforts to get participation up aren't working, we would adjust that levy accordingly. But the money, similar to how the general fund and the utility funds have reserves, the EDA would, has a reserve.
So we're, the EDA is looking at using this to generate new business possibly in empty spaces and making those more desirable by helping the current owners.
Right.
Create space and then also helping current business owners. Revitalize their business or provide more resources. Okay.
Yep, so if they want to do.
And they're, you guys are going, it's all going to be advertised and.
There's a list of what they can and cannot use the money for.
But like going out to our current business owners.
Yep.
You know, having them come and how to, you know, walking them through the process to submit for a grant.
Yep.
Okay.
First come, first served, right?
First come, first served on the grant, but we will do mailings out to all the business owners at the same time so that they are aware, they know the, the programs out there as we start getting ramped up. Because this program, so the, the timing of the funds dictates when the money starts going out. So we budget 50,000, but they're not going to get the bulk of it till the end of the year because property taxes come in two halves. So they'll get some at mid-year of 2024 and the rest at the end of the year in 2024. So they can start, we can, we got time to get the advertising out and make businesses all aware and we'll say, here's the first run of the grant program and make sure.
I'm, I'm excited. I think that this is a nice way to try to generate some businesses that may have tried to come in and didn't realize what it takes and this could maybe have given them a bump to actually open their doors. Awesome, okay, that was my only question.
And that is my update on the budget. Trying. Now we'll go right into the presentation here. Try to keep this on the short side. So what I want to do is just a short council development session, talk about sources, uses and timing of the city funds. So what we'll cover tonight is revenue streams, expense streams, timing of those, and then debt service for each fund. So we're taking the 30,000 foot view on this. We're not going to go into the nitty gritty weeds on every little line item. But after this, you should have a pretty good sense of what, when monies come in, when monies go out and then the debt service on everything. So we'll take these in order from general fund first and then down through the, the utility funds. So for the general fund, they have five major sources of revenue, property taxes, LGA, local government aid, fire contracts, licenses and permits, and another category, which is kind of a conglomerate of, you know, the, the antenna rent, penalties and interest, interest earnings on investments. A lot of those smaller categories, some of the county grants we get, that they're just not worth breaking out on a high level like this. So, and how that gets broken down is property taxes and LGA make up the bulk of our revenue. And so property taxes is 41.6%, LGA at just under 41. Fire contracts at six, licenses and permits a little under five and other just about seven on that. Now, the timing of these payments is quite important. When you talk about. So we'll skip ahead to talk about revenues a little bit here. So the timing on our revenues, property taxes, we get those payments twice a year in June and November. LGA, local government aid, that's what we get from the state, very similar. That comes in July and December. So those are two, 80% of our revenues come from those two sources and we get them twice a year. So what we have to do on the revenue side is we have to make sure we have reserved enough. And this is where the auditors talk about that 35 to 50%. Have you heard that in the past about reserves? This is where this comes into play. Because we only get two payments a year, we need to have enough money in the bank to survive six months before we get our injections of tax settlement and LG. Fire contracts, even though they're lesser amount, typically come July and December, two payments. Sometimes they make them in one payment at the end, depends on the township for those. Licenses and permits, the bulk of those is what we get off building permits. That's the vast majority of the license and permits fund and those we get during construction season during the summer. So it hits during that May, June, July, August period in the middle there. We look at the expenditure side of things for the general fund. The five major categories is general government, public safety, public works, parks and EDA transfer. General government involves council, elections, administration. It involves the computer services we have with Jimmy Brand and a handful of other categories in that. Public safety is the two category, well, three categories for public safety, actually. The bulk goes towards law enforcement, the contract we have with the county and then fire protection. The third smaller one is building inspection. That's part of public safety. Why that's part of public safety is you're ensuring the buildings are safe for the public. That's where it gets lodged. Public works, the bulk of that is with the streets and then the maintenance building primarily. And then to a smaller extent, public works also encompasses the compost site. So that's a much smaller expense. Parks is really just parks, the park system we have the whole. And then the fifth category, that is the new one, it would have been four, but then we have the EDA transfer that we have in that. So how those expenditures get broken down, general government being about 35%, public safety at 30, public works at 19, parks at 11 and EDA at just under five for those breakouts. So how do, how does this look graphically throughout the year? And I got a couple of different graphs on this one. The blue represents our revenues and the, red represents our expenditures. Now, these aren't perfect numbers perfectly that we have month by month. It's meant to give an idea of how this works. So generally speaking, our expenditures are pretty fixed throughout the year. The general fund is an operations budget, so we're spending an amount every single month. But the bulk we have here is in June and July with 80% of our revenue is coming in. So that's where you get the influx of cash, boost up the reserves so I can survive another five, six months until you get the next influx of cash. Probably a better representation would be this graph. This is more of a cash flow graph. On this, this would represent, and this is more representative of what our actual fund balance would look like based upon that. So you have, your highest point is at the start of the year and at the mid of the year because you get that November, December tax and LGA. So you start at your highest in January, slide down until you start hitting June and July where you get your influxes back up and you slide back down and you kind of go through this bouncing cycle like that. This is some of the importance of why we've gotten capital improvements out of the general fund and in their own areas. Whereas if you don't have CIP funds, a lot of that is housed within the general fund. And what that does is that creates funding cash flow needs. So if you're paying for a fire truck in February, in, in April, let's say, well, that's when you're really low on cash. Well, now you have to make sure you have cash flow needs fixed to make sure that you're able to pay for that, but then pay for operations as well. The development of individual CIP funds takes that fluctuation out of there. It puts them in their own funds, they have their own pots of money that are levied for so that when the time comes to make that purchase, it just affects that fund. The money's already sitting there, ready for the payment. So you're not seeing these really wild fluctuations in your general fund. So that's the purpose of spreading that out. On the debt service side of things, so this is our debt service of existing debt out to 2041, which is the last year that we have it. Obviously more debt will come on after that time. We're not going to be just debt stagnant for the next 20 years. But this is where we're at today and these debt services, the debt services in the general fund are made up of the 2015 debt, which was the roundabout project that was done. And then it was also a piece of fire equipment that was purchased. It's the 2020A debt service, which was another piece of fire equipment, the 2021A bond, which was the fire station, the 2021B bond, which is for Fifth Street. That was done. And then the 2023A, which is the Millen overlay project that's going to get started here in a couple of weeks. So that's all represented in this.
So the bond that we did for Fifth Street.
Yes.
Because we did assess.
Yes.
How does the assessment payments, because I do know that they're assessed every, do we get a special payment every year from the, because I know the assessments are done over, I can't remember how many years we picked.
Correct. Yep, you are correct. So the graph you're looking at, you jumped me on that. So good, good question. This represents what we levy each year. This doesn't represent the totality of the actual payment because we have special assessments that do come in. When we get tax settlements in the two parts of the year, in June and towards the end of the year, we have what we levy and then we have special assessments that we also receive. So the special assessments get deposited into the debt service funds for all of these debts. So the combination of the payment is by and large, the levy, the special assessment, if they're, if it's applicable. And in some circumstances, the water fund does contribute to a couple of our debts. So that makes up the total payment. But we break those out according. So the special assessments just go into the debt service funds. We don't worry about those too much. But we do have breakdowns on our bond transcripts that says, this is how much you can expect in assessments. Here's how much you need to levy to make up that difference. So these represents that levy portion of it.
And so the increase from 23 to 24, is that the Millen overlay?
So this is. This spreadsheet, it didn't come up, why not? Oh, probably because I have it. Huh. Yeah, something screwed up.
I'm not seeing nothing either, move on this computer.
Let's do that. There, that also works. So this spreadsheet you've seen before, you saw last time. We get down to the debt levy portion here. This is where we've got all the bonds listed that the general fund covers for. And why you see that vacillation in there is because we have some debt overlap from some bonds falling off because it wasn't quite perfect as these bonds start to increase. So the big one here is the 2020A, that's the big increasing one as we get into 25 and 26.
Yeah, and that's the fire station.
That's the fire station. So you have some bonds here that are falling off with the debt service cover of the sewer fund. So it's not a perfect transition of things where debts fall off and new pick up. So you have a little, what I'll call the awkward years where some come on. So you have higher, 2023.
Yeah, but I thought on your thing, it showed 2024 going up.
Yeah, actually I think you're right.
Yeah. So that didn't align with what that spreadsheet showed us, right?
Right.
Or am I not looking at that right?
No, because you got 23 and then 24 and 25 are higher, but on this spreadsheet, it's not correct. I'll double back on that because that's not what we're showing here as general fund.
Right. I was surprised.
Yeah.
I thought our debt continued to go.
Yeah, and that was one of the reasons why the fire station got approved when it did, knowing that, that one, the 155, the last payment was 2023. So really our debt service was pretty flat.
I'm wondering if I'm missing numbers here that aren't getting pulled in on the spreadsheet? Because this graph came off of a different spreadsheet I have, so I'm going to. Because this graph came off of a different spreadsheet I have, so I'm going to double check those because you're right.
Yeah, but we, I think we're going to be a little bit more level than we are this fluctuation these four years right there.
Let me double check on this and then I'll I'll report out on it.
Okay.
So you're correct on that. So off to the water fund now. The utility funds get far more simple simply because they have less departments going on within them. So the the water fund, water sales account for eighty nine percent of the revenues. And those are pretty steady from month to month. So the big thing you're going to notice between the general fund and the utility funds is the shape. Of the revenues and expenditures. That's the biggest difference in that. And water expenditures are lodged between operation and debt service, operation being fifty two percent and debt service being forty eight. So we look at how the water fund functions is our biggest, our debt service pay, biggest debt service payment. We have a small one in February, you can see there. And generally speaking, throughout the year, we have general operational expenditures. The big debt service payment we have with the water fund, two of those come in August, as you can see here. So throughout the year, we're garnering revenues. We're not necessarily spending all those revenues, but it becomes a buildup to make the big debt service payment to make sure we have enough to do that. So cash flow on the water fund looks something like that. Where we have the big hit in August where we pay our debt service and then you build back up. Now, year over year, you make more than you spend, so over time you climb on your fund balances on that. Debt service for the water. I know this one is accurate because there's only three bonds that affect the water fund. There we have a slowly scaling down on the water fund end of things. The two thousand six PFA loan is the major one we have outstanding there that we're still paying on. And the last payment in that will be in two thousand twenty six. Other than that, so from twenty three to twenty four, the last payment. There is on the two thousand fifteen, the two thousand fifteen A bond that the water fund contributes to. After that, it's just the two thousand six and two thousand twenty PFA bonds that we have. Two thousand six, I'm not sure what it was for, but the two thousand twenty one, that was for the water treatment plant improvements and the water tower work that was done.
And we don't, we feel like our water plant is in a really good position.
Yeah.
There, we don't foresee needing major projects in the next like five to ten years, correct? Because we did most of them. We added that second, that well.
Yep.
And.
Yep.
So we don't foresee, at least in twenty twenty seven, us having some major prod- project.
Nope, I do not see anything that would take up nearly that bulk. So the bulk of that, what I see here is this is an opportunity for us to reduce water rates. Because that debt service is going to fall off. And so your expenses drop off significantly, so you're not going to need that water revenue to support debt that isn't there. Now you're going to want to make sure that you have revenues over expenditures to make sure you're putting money away into your reserves, but that's not going to be all that. So in this area.
We're finally catching up to when the water plant was built. For an influx of new homes that never actually transf- but transpired. At the time that that was decided to be built.
Right.
That we're now actually catching up so we can then really make some adjustments to water rates to be.
Yeah, that just got completed and then the housing market crashed.
Yeah, and it's taken, you know, we've had to make some.
Mm hmm.
Changes and updates and but now I think, yeah, like we're sitting pretty good.
Yep, that's where I see this opportunity here, adjust rates down. Give some savings to everybody because I don't want to charge more than we have to.
Right.
We're finally in the green. We used to be in the red a lot. For water, when I first joined the council, we were in the red and had to do increases.
Nobody likes that. So this would be an opportunity to finally lower it. As we get into the wastewater fund. Wastewater sales account for seventy eight percent of the revenues. Property taxes because we have that outstanding debt. There's only one debt outstanding now on the sewer fund. Property taxes account for thirteen percent and that's the amount we levy for that gets transferred to the sewer fund. Wastewater expenditures again are split between operation debt service and they're pretty similar in split as the water fund. We look at the sources and uses and timing, very similar to the water fund, just different time. The big debt service we payment we make is in December. The one debt service payment we make is in December out of the sewer fund. So you build up funds throughout the year so that. Go ahead and make that payment in December along with operational costs. Again, that's what it looks like. The big drop off in December, then you build up to the year and then one there. On the bonding end of things now, we're talking about the wastewater treatment facility and we just talked about the two million dollars. I'd be looking at that. So as terms of an annual amount, depending on your interest rate, we're talking at about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. And debt service payment on that new issuance. So if you were to just imagine, if it all goes through, you'd be looking at a hundred and thirty thousand. So similar to water, you're looking at a stark decrease. We wouldn't be able to adjust rates much because the new debt service, again, as I mentioned, is calculated upon if we kept rates stable. What this allows us to do is not levy taxes to help pay the bond payment, which we're doing now. So we get to cut it out of our levy instead of cutting it out of.
The bill.
The utility bills.
I mean, I feel like there's some really good timing in some of these things that are coming in, coming up.
And these these sorts of things. The the term that we use is called debt laddering. So when you have debt fall off, you put new debt on. So you're not putting debt on debt and stacking really high and now you got to charge exorbitant rates. So as you see debt coming off, you ask the question, is there anything else we want to start new debt debt on as this comes off? Don't not always the case, as you see with the water fund, it just drops off and then we have the one debt service and we're not anticipating debt for probably another decade or so.
But with the changes that the whatever the organization is having for the sewer wastewater. We have to make these changes and we have issues that we need to kind of like Band-Aid. And made the best out of the situation we have.
Right.
Which is huge compliments to our public work staff that has been able to make what we have work.
Mm hmm.
And then align it where we probably would start the project and even then kind of like how we did the fire station is. You might have one year where you're paying a little bit more, but then the next year.
Back to normal.
You're back to normal.
For this, we would strike up, we would strike up the debt, so it's starting twenty twenty five, no matter what.
Oh, okay. So you would, if we even did the, oh, because it is twenty twenty three and. Next year is twenty, okay. You know, it just helps to know what year we're in.
No, but to your, let's let's say the scenario is we had a twenty twenty five payment. What would we do? I would say we would push back the first principal payment to twenty twenty six. And as you structure your bond issuance, you can do those things.
Yeah, and that's what we did with the fire station.
Right.
Which just allowed for a little bit better transition and not having to have huge influxes in in tax.
And then one year was.
Yeah, and that's kind of our goal is we want to kind of try to keep it steady, especially since we don't have a lot of new growth.
Right. Storm sewer fund, it it looks more wild than it actually is just because it deals with much smaller sums of funding. So storm sewer sales account for ninety six percent of revenues and it's broken rather than debt service and operations. Because it's such a smaller fund, it doesn't have any debt service. So we get to break it down between engineering, maintenance and capital expenditures. And the bulk of that currently go towards the wetland management that's being done. And the maintenance portion goes towards if they cleaning out inlets and outlets and things like that. So you can see on the Y axis there on the side, you're dealing with much smaller sums of money. So that's the reason for that. And so when we do get revenues and we do have expenditures. It's more pronounced because of that. So our revenues are pretty steady throughout the year. It's about seven grand a month. But the bulk of our expenditures comes during the middle of the year because that's, that's when they're out there working on the wetlands and they're doing the engineering reports and things of that nature. Because we don't deal a lot with storms who are in the winter. So the graph on that tends to look something like this. Now, if you're dealing. So again, remember the Y axis is fund balance, not necessarily annual amounts we're dealing with. So this is the fund balance we're looking at. As opposed to this is being on an annual dollar basis of when things things go out. So it rises and falls, but over time it grows overall. And this is based upon twenty twenty four looks as we're looking at sonaring those ponds. And then on twenty twenty five, this graph could change as we figure out how we fund the dredging and all of that fun stuff.
At some point, can we get an update on the wetland credits and like what's going on with that?
Yep, so they completed, they completed their report, I think was earlier this month. And they got that sent off, Koha got that sent off to the Army Corps of Engineers and they'll be reviewing that. It sounds like we're going to get a little more partial credit release. So how it works is we don't get all the credits at once, little bits at a time as we complete things. But it looks like we're going to get another credit release, small credit release. I can't remember the exact amount, but.
And then if we sell those credits, right?
Yep.
Where does, does that money go back into this fund?
Yes. So we sell those credits, those monies go back into this fund. And my understanding of this idea was is those credits are supposed to pay for.
Pay for that debt that we, when we did that whole.
Pay for that restoration and then even the hope was to even make a little on the top if possible.
Sounds like we're going to.
Credit situation seems to be. Good.
We had somebody interested in that last year in buying some.
It basically functions like a commodity market.
Right.
Okay, I mean, that was, that was one reason why we did that because then we looped it in with fixing some storm sewer issues out of Hidden Creek.
Yep.
And then kind of combine that. So we were hoping that this would then, the credits would then pay for that project.
It should.
So when, we haven't sold any credits yet, correct?
I think some have been sold, but we don't have a lot to start with.
So some were sold and that, have we gotten that revenue?
I will double check to figure.
I'm just curious because I would like to see like really simple spreadsheet, like this is what the project was. Here's what, you know, like the credits, just to see it coming back. Does that make sense?
Yep.
I was just thinking about that right now. Like I apologize to throw it into this.
For some reason, four credits that we sold is sticking in my head.
Yeah, and I, maybe I missed a meeting or I just don't remember. But yeah, I mean, it would be nice to just see like if we could look back and see like this is what we paid for the project. And then here's our credits and kind of when they're coming, because it would be nice to just see like this is why we did what we did. I mean, for my own personal.
Yeah, I'll.
Too, because that that's why we approved it the way we did.
I'll prepare a presentation with that update. We'll do it during budget for.
All right, well, sorry I threw it on you right now. I just thought.
No, no, yeah, that's fine. I was certainly prepared.
He likes making graphs.
Oh, yeah, I get to make a piece of, I get spreadsheets and I get. So that's my budget update for this go around.
Thanks, Nick.
All right, well, we're adjourned.